We have no recognition. If everybody could join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Whedon.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yeah.
Money.
Present.
Swin.
Yes.
George.
Here, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Take a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll so move. Money, I'll support.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thank you. At this time, we will take public comments on agenda items only. Please submit your comments to three minutes and state your name for the record at the podium, please. Okay, seeing nobody approaching. At this time, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Do we have support?
I'll second.
Thank you. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Schedule matters from the floor. Municipal financial advisor proposal. Consider approval of a proposal to perform financial services and analysis along with the rate consult services from Ben Zicky and Company. Andy Campbell, CPA.
Okay, I'll lead into this. With a significant number and amount of our new and outstanding bonds, it's essential we have professional guidance in maintaining compliance, financial oversight, and professional analysis with recommendations and justifications for our water and sewer rates and periodic adjustments. Before us today is a proposal from a firm with a personnel and CPA most familiar with the city's financial picture as they've been involved with us for over five years now. There are several elements of the downtown project that are not eligible to be funded from the USDA loans and needs to come likely from the general and streets funds. So it's going to be a challenge and a stressor on our general and street funds to come up with the dollars to perform the non USDA elements of the downtown project. Ben Zinski will provide the guidance and oversight as we navigate through that process, with the understanding that we stress the importance to scrutinize every fund and dollar to achieve completion of the project. And as I outlined here in the proposal, they'll provide the financial advisory and rate consultant services regarding the city's water and sewer systems. They'll provide review and analysis of historical operating expenses for all funds using audit and budget information from the general fund, the street fund, and the water and sewer enterprise fund. They provide an analysis of all the city's existing debt relating to the DPW building bond, the 2009 and 2010 bonds, 2020 wastewater treatment oxidation ditch bond, and the recently issued USDA water and sewer bonds. There's three of them that we just acquired for $16 million. So our annual payments going forward are going to be about $1.5 million a year. And so we're going to really have to watch our dollars and our funds so we can pay this, these bonds off. They provide a cash reserve analysis across all funds and recommendations for cash reserve policies going forward. And upon completion and throughout the engagement, detailed findings and financial recommendations relative to the city's finances will be provided. And they also will provide usual and customary financial consultant services. Bottom line, we need guidance going forward with the amount of debt and bonds we have in-house here. And this fund with their individuals that are familiar with their finances would be the firm to go forward with. And so I'm looking for commission authorization to proceed with Ben Zinski and Company for our financial advisory services.
Very good. Thank you, Tim. Would someone like to make a motion regarding Ben Zinski and Company?
I'll move to approve the proposal from Ben Zinski and Company as presented.
Very good. Do we have support?
This is money I'll support.
Thank you. Discussion?
I agree with Tim's assessment. I think continuing our relationship with Andy makes a lot of sense for this community.
I want to say the same thing. I hate spending money to watch our money because that's basically what we're doing. But this is way over anybody's head, so we have no choice. And this company doesn't charge, they're charging us a fee and they're not nailing us for that per hour like the other company was. It looked pretty nasty. That per hour thing looked really scary.
And they'll also provide five-year rate studies for the water and sewer. And you need to have someone that can confirm and justify the rates you're charging out there. And this is all part and parcel of that proposal as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'd be coming in and doing that publicly then, right?
Yep.
Yeah. That would be, that's, that's good to know because that would give us our, our third one in a short period of time. And the first two have justified it, so one more opinion.
Okay, roll call, please.
Swin.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Whedon.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next on the agenda, engineering service proposal. Consider approval of proposal from Jones and Henry Engineers to assist Buchanan wastewater treatment plant in the determination of local limits for PFOS compounds and development of pollutant minimization plan for the same.
Okay, we have been charged by the state to develop local limits for the discharge of PFOS compounds and to establish a pollutant minimization plan. I reached out to a firm that specializes in this type of work and they are performing similar functions with the city of Three Rivers as they also have a landfill discharging to their wastewater plant. And they also are familiar with the state regulatory personnel who are, who are overseeing these programs. So we would like to work with this firm and achieve state requirements. And we would have to have our own, we would have our own compliance officer, Zoe, out there now. She would perform much of the legwork to keep our costs down. And Jones and Henry Engineers, they're, they're specialized in this type of work, working on local limits. And they will determine what those limits should be, either mass-based limits, concentration limits for PFOS. It's the new cautionary chemical out there that everybody needs to be aware of. And we have to comply with all the rules and regulations regarding it as they are now, they've developed drinking water standards for the PFOS compounds. So Jones and Henry would review our existing information and our submittals to the state. They would conduct review meetings with the wastewater plant and the dischargers out there who are discharging the PFOS. And they would assist in the calculation of those local limits. And they prepare a written report at the end and also assist us in the development of that pollutant minimization plan. And so for $9,875, I'd like to retain this firm to assist us with that program.
Will the state reimburse us for anything, any of this since it's mandated by them?
Not at this time, Dan.
Good question.
Boy, that's so nice of them.
This, this was brought to the Water Sewer Board and it was recommended for approval by them.
Yeah, I know. But, I mean, the state mandates this stuff because the landfill's flowing into our wastewater plant, right?
Yes, and the landfill does pay surcharge rates to the city because they are our only...
But it's still money that we wouldn't have to spend if the state didn't mandate. We spent $10,000.
Correct. Agreed.
All right, very good. Thank you, Tim. At this time, I'll take a motion regarding Jones and Henry Engineers.
This is money I'll move to approve the proposal from Jones and Henry Engineers as presented.
Very good. Do we have support? Thank you. Roll call, please. Are any discussions? Sorry, my apologies.
George.
Yes.
Whedon.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Swin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, reports by departments, committees, and boards. We have a presentation by Liv Buchanan.
Good evening. How are you, Arthur?
Good, you're good.
Good. Thank you, Arthur.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you. I think it added to the...
It made him funny.
It did, actually.
It made him funny.
It, yeah.
Okay, so thank you for having me here this evening. I'm joined by much, if not all, of the Liv Buchanan Board of Directors for this presentation. And I just wanted to walk through, I know it's been a long evening already, but I wanted to walk through in some detail, I think intentional detail, some of what's being proposed as next steps for Liv Buchanan. Because as we all know, this has been, well, since 2023, a conversation in this community about Liv Buchanan and what it set its sights out to do. So just some context for some folks who may not have been up to speed on this. But Liv Buchanan was formed in 2023 to follow the steps to help Buchanan become certified as a Michigan Main Street community, which comes with all sorts of economic benefits. It's a recognized framework that has been recognized at the national level for being something that provides tangible benefits to communities. It does a lot of this through what's called the four-point approach or the Main Street approach through economic development or economic vitality, as it's called, promotion and marketing, preservation and beautification, or they call it design, and then organization. Taken together, these things are what help strengthen a downtown, a commercial core. And they've been proven techniques for community revitalization. Some of the benefits for a Main Street program, again, is a refresher, strengthening the existing tax base, providing a positive community image, helping create visually appealing and viable downtown buildings through the preservation efforts, attracting new businesses, creating new jobs, and increasing investment in the downtown. There are 40-plus examples around the state and hundreds, if not, well, maybe not thousands, but hundreds of examples across the country. And in your folders, you'll see an impact report that shows, we won't dwell on it, but some of the dollars and cents for the return on investment these programs have in their communities. And I believe all of those numbers are just 2023 impact. So you can see some significant return on investment. I'm going to go right here, right off the bat, and talk about the concept of a DDA here in the community. So I know one of the questions is, does something like Liv Buchanan conflict with the possibility of reconstituting a downtown development authority for this community? And it does not at all. In fact, it is in the best interest of the city of Buchanan, at least in my personal opinion, and certainly in the best interest of Liv Buchanan to reconstitute the DDA because of the tax mechanisms that the DDA has at its disposal that an organization like Liv Buchanan simply does not. It's a saying that's thrown around too often, but it is a tool in the toolbox that is currently not in Buchanan's toolbox and should be re-added. Most communities too, so the DDAs will actually run the Main Street program. And for the communities where there is both a Main Street host organization, as it's called, and a DDA, the host organization, in this case Liv Buchanan, contracts both with the community, with the city, and with the DDA, two separate agreements for the provision of services. Our Main Street program's required to have staff. So the answer is at the select and master levels, which is what we're pursuing for Buchanan because that's where some of the real Main Street benefits kick in. They are, regardless of size, required to have a full-time staff person dedicated to the revitalization of the downtown. I threw this point on here just because I'd never thought about it like this. But if downtowns are competing with malls and box stores, which have managers, then why wouldn't we afford our downtown the same privilege? Who pays for a local Main Street program? These budgets per the Main Street program itself say it should be a public-private partnership. The Main Street program doesn't charge a community for being part of the program, nor do they fund a Main Street program for the community. Typical funding comes from DDAs, principal shopping districts, pledges, sponsors, dues, memberships, contracts for services, which is what we're going to talk about today, and then local municipal contributions. So current state versus future state, sort of a where are we right now and where do we want to get to? Right now, the city's annual investment, already budgeted, is about $69,000 roughly towards these pursuits, already in the budget. What Liv Buchanan is requesting today is an annual commitment of $100,000 through a five-year commitment, which is something that the Main Street program requires. Previously, the director was an employee of the city, which means they were on the employees, I'm sorry, on the city's payroll. They drew from the city's benefits. They created liability for the city. What we're proposing is that the eventual full-time director, which is required, is not a city employee. In fact, they'd be a regional chamber employee. So we would be assuming all of those risks and liabilities. Right now, there is no service agreement in place or a five-year commitment from the community, both things that are required in order to receive the Michigan Main Street designation. Part of today is asking for those commitments. The DDA, again, not reconstituted yet, but we would hope in the future state that it would be. And then our organization has not been part of this process up until probably a few months ago when the city and Liv spoke to us about helping power some of this, which we'll talk about in a second. But ultimately, what we need in order to get to that Michigan Main Street designation is to, you know, pursue that investment, hire that director, have a mutually agreed-upon contract for services that, you know, pending attorney review, five-year commitment from the community, and then we'll be off to the races. So some of the deliverables are going to match exactly what you saw in that four-point approach. Economic development, the attraction of new business, the expansion of existing business, helping secure that tax base and providing technical and financial assistance. Promotion and marketing, something my organization is very well-versed in, ensuring that downtown remains a key shopping center, not just in this area, but for the region. Preservation and beautification, some placemaking, revitalization efforts, historic preservation efforts, and then organization. So by this, it doesn't mean Liv Buchanan, the organization. It means actually helping organize the community, gathering the stakeholders, and working towards a common goal. One example of that organization work could be leading the reconstitution of the DDA. So the director that's hired for Liv Buchanan could actually be the sort of project manager that makes sure that that DDA ends up happening. Proposed oversight, so we do this with some of the other organizations that we're involved with. I'm a big believer, especially when it comes to taxpayer dollars, that there has to be pretty strict oversight, actually. This would include regular reporting, which would be spelled out in that service agreement. It would be my vision that the director would appear at each city meeting and provide regular updates. There'd be board representation from the city on Liv Buchanan, including an ex officio seat for the mayor, the mayor's designee, along with other appointment power. And then regional oversight and support, which means us. So Liv Buchanan would be entering into a management agreement, a management agreement with the regional chamber. And we will in turn provide some operational oversight, some personnel management, shared services, which we'll talk about in a moment. But first, I know that it's important to talk budget if we're talking transparency. So I'm not going to dwell too much on this. If there are questions, we can come back to it. But as you see, the city and their current investment is about $69,000 currently budgeted towards these pursuits. No director in place, no Main Street designation. Our goal is to maximize these, these investments and get to those things. We're asking for an additional $31,000 to get to that total of $100,000. As you see under expenses, the first couple points there, the vast majority of that investment is going to go, or at least we're budgeting it, budgeting it towards the salary of that director position. A higher, slightly higher base compensation than there was before, some benefits so that we remain competitive in this marketplace. And the reason for pushing those numbers a little bit higher is so that we hire a quality employee that remains here for a meaningful period of time, ideally all five years and beyond. We, we, no one wants turnover in some of these key positions, and we certainly don't. We'd want this person to be an expert when they hit the ground running and to stay on the ground for as long as, as long as they'll have us. The management fee, I can talk about that in a little bit. That right-hand column where it says Liv Buchanan, second to the right, that's funds that Liv Buchanan is responsible for fundraising. And then on the expense side, responsible for paying for that. Management fee is the 10% on the salary that our organization would receive in exchange for incurring the risk and some of the overages that might occur for hiring that personnel. Those other expenses go along with the four-point approach, organization, design, promotion, vitality. And as you can see, the incubator, which is something that, you know, that Liv is known for, is not going to be paid for through Liv funds. It's going to be paid through rent and other fundraising and sponsorships. So the regional chamber, let's talk about my organization for a second. I mentioned we'll have a management agreement with Liv Buchanan. So Liv Buchanan, a lot of agreements. We're talking about a service agreement with the city, a management agreement with the chamber. That management agreement will spell out our responsibility for hiring and dedicating staff to Liv Buchanan and the city of Buchanan. And then the additional support and resources that we provide so that that director, no matter how good they are, no one's going to be able to survive if they're a one-person show. In this new structure, they're not a one-person show. They would have myself helping manage and assist on a daily basis. We have experience with program management. We have an in-house grant writer who can help with some of the fundraising and help Liv achieve organizational sustainability, in-house accounting to provide more financial oversight for the organization, in-house marketing expertise. And then we pay for quite a few data platforms that I think would be very beneficial for Liv and the city of Buchanan to benefit from. And then, of course, you know, we're a regional organization, a tri-county organization. But we have, our network expands across the state of Michigan and in multiple states. And so this effort that Buchanan is undertaking, that it's already undertaken, would see additional reach. The city of Buchanan would receive additional recognition for being on the forefront of economic development in our region. And then the city of Buchanan is already an investor in the regional chamber. They've already invested in Liv Buchanan. And so by aligning our efforts, I believe that it's a better return on investment for the city's dollars. In your packets, you'll see too some examples from our Bridgman Chamber and Growth Alliance, or what we call the Bridgman CGA. So our organization maintains a very similar structure and arrangement in Bridgman, not far from here, where we provide, we hire their director, dedicate them to Bridgman, we provide shared services. They maintain a separate board, separate finances, and a separate identity. And it works really well because that community identity is really what's the most important. And the fact that Bridgman's not doing it alone, they're doing it with us, helps as well. So a good example of this already working and some of the results broken up into those four points. We've seen five ribbon cuttings just this year alone. Our director there, with assistance of our grant writers, submitted over 2.5 million in grant requests, more than recouping some of that city and township investment. They are pursuing the redevelopment-ready community status, much like we're pursuing the Main Street status. The Bridgman Courtyard has won awards. There's new wayfinding signage, new website launched, brochures, community events organized, networking, educational events, so on and so forth. So having that dedicated, boots-on-the-ground approach pays dividends. Why am I here, really? Why is my organization getting involved? And when I, you know, with that, that grand whopping total of $6,500 that we're estimating coming back to us, why did my board say that this was something worth getting into? The simple fact is the Main Street approach has been proven to work. Anywhere it's been tried, not too far from here, Niles being the only Marion County example, but wherever it's been tried, it's worked. We're a believer in it. Regionalism is something many of you have heard me talk about for a long time. It's a strategic priority for our organization. It's a main reason we're here because that collaboration, regional collaboration, is what's going to help our region thrive. But then also, we believe in Buchanan. I think each of the city manager interviews referenced the potential that this community has. I don't think that that was a line in order to get the job. With, with the city's emphasis on economic development and the investments that have already been made, we are at that tipping point where I think the city is going to see some real return. And we want to be here, along with Liv, to help push, you know, some of that over the hill and achieve that downward momentum that we're all excited about. Going back to this, so the steps right now, the most immediate next steps in order to move to the next stage of this and achieve that Michigan Main Street designation is the execution, or at least the creation of that service agreement, the approval of that service agreement, and the fact that it would contain that five-year commitment. All of the details, or terms, I should say, the terms can be ironed out in that agreement so that the city is comfortable, that it mitigates any risk involved with this. But I think that the, the deliverables are there. There are many examples of contracts like this, and in fact, every other community because it's required. The ROI is there. That impact report demonstrates some of that. And I think with some tracking here, we can quickly demonstrate it. And so today, we are really asking for the commission to just approve the drafting of that service agreement, pending attorney review, obviously, to commit $100,000 annually straight to Liv Buchanan in exchange for Liv Buchanan serving as the city of Buchanan's economic and community development arm and the implementer of the Main Street program. A lot of information and fast talking, I'm sorry. But happy to entertain any questions. Can go back on any of these slides. I might grab some water.
So this is $100,000 for five years?
It would be a $100,000 investment annually over the course of five years. And there's some...
How much was the DDA getting at its best year?
At the end, it was $66,000.
66?
Yeah.
But that was collected from TIF. That was the TIF. That wasn't coming out of general fund. Thank you, Randy. I want to make, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to postpone this till April because we've got a new city manager coming in. This is a half a million dollar decision. You know, and I mean, I've talked to you quite a while about it, and I don't necessarily disagree, but you know how I feel. The DDA was a fiasco as far as what this commission did to it, what the city did to it. I think it's going to be detrimental to recreating a DDA. We approved looking into it. It's already the end of November. I haven't talked to Dan. I haven't talked to Rich. I mean, I have called Dan.
Right.
But there's been no movement on it. And, you know, I keep getting maybes, which make me very nervous. So, I mean, the, and I, I kind of disagree on when this started. This started before '23. It might have actually been organized in '23, but I think Ashley was hired in 2020. So this started in 2020. And they have a massive bunch of people that are working on it. But they can conduct meetings with only two people. They weren't forthcoming with being open. And we've given them way more money, or as much money, as we give the DDA with no oversight. So, and I mean, it would completely change. I had that, we had that question and answer. But at this point in time, with us being where we're at, I mean, I just feel a DDA is much more prevalent, much more important. And then follow up with the Main Street. And I don't think, you know, it's on stall right now. So, I mean, we have the structure. You know, and the only reason why I'm giving this explanation is so that I can convince some people what my thinking is. And I don't think we're at a point where we need to commit $100,000, especially with city managers changing up. I don't want to give this $100,000 debt to a brand-new city manager. You know, and that's what it is. It's not, because it's going to be, we have to hire somebody. We've already paid Ashley, so we're going to have to cough up $100,000, bottom line. And we never even contemplated giving that kind of money to DDA, never. And the DDA did a whole lot more than Main Street's ever thought of doing. So that's my motion.
There's a motion on the floor. Do we have support?
I'll support. For the purpose of discussion.
Yeah, I'll have some discussion on it. So, been meeting with Arthur and the team for, ever since Ashley decided to leave, I've known the regional chamber, been involved in it with past CEOs of that organization. But in the four years that Arthur's ran it, everyone here's had opportunity to meet with him ahead of this meeting a little bit to ask their own questions, kind of get their flavor for him. Arthur and his team, they're, they're delivering across the region. The problem I see with only pursuing Buchanan's economic growth through a DDA is just, we're, we're trying to carve a path all by ourselves without any support from our, our neighboring communities. And the investment they're making, there's no alignment with the region. And Arthur's group allows us that conduit to do that. What they're asking for is to help us embrace the DDA because it's a long-term funding mechanism. The city's already invested a sizable commitment into pursuing the Main Street designation, as well as numerous volunteers have donated their time to helping it stand up. To get to a point which ultimately, I hate to say it in a negative way, crumbled when the last contract negotiation came in front of us. So we had, we were already at this point, at that stage, we were reviewing a contract that was insufficient. And I think what they're asking us to do is pursue a new contract with better terms for the city, more enforceable terms, more reporting, more resources. I mean, the DDA is gonna have to hire and employ itself, so there's an investment there. The city's already contributing sixty-nine thousand dollars to this already. The DDA's not gonna accomplish this with a bunch of volunteers. It just won't happen. I don't know what, with all due respect, I don't know what your expectations on the DDA being successful is with a bunch of volunteers. It's incredibly difficult. Oftentimes, these groups become event planning organizations, which is the exact opposite of the mission of the Main Street program, if you look into this packet. You know, my expectation of this group would be, especially since the grant writing resource is there, that they would far exceed their ability, or, sorry, far exceed our investment in them. On that, that ground alone, when you look at the amount of money Rich has been bringing into this community in recent year, that pays for his salary for, you know, ten years or better, probably way more than ten years in reality. So, and if they're not meeting on those deliverables, that's a conversation we should be having with them on not meeting expectations.
After we spend a hundred thousand dollars. And the whole problem being is, is the DDA failed because of a commission. It failed because of the commission and the volunteers. They didn't stand up. They didn't stand up. And we're at, we're where we're at right now with this because the volunteers didn't stand up when they started this. Ashley was a debacle, but everybody wanted to go rah-rah. Nobody would stand up to it. And now, here we are, three years later, and give me another hundred thousand dollars and I promise I'll fix it.
Yeah, I think the difference, the difference is though, Dan, and everything you're saying is factually correct. That goes without question. I think we're at a point now where we have substantial amount of backing to get to where you're at, right? So you're saying three years, right? Valid. But the difference is, in that three years, we've learned what it's gonna take to make this Main Street a functional, viable option for the city of Buchanan. The DDA is gonna be back. Now, if it stalled right now, we need to find that out. But it is on the return. We've already approved for that negotiation to occur. But what we need now is, we need continued economic focus on the city of Buchanan. Because is every person who interviewed these last two days, there's a palpable vitality that is starting to be focused on Buchanan. And I think if we don't put our hands around something that is gonna continue to push this focus forward, until the DDA is back in place and we're able to have a funding mechanism that, at the five-year mark, is no longer taken out of the city's budget, then what do we have?
I'm gonna be the Grinch. You ain't got the money.
While you're already answering that, before you get too deep, 'cause I do have a question, like, if the DDA is reenacted, right, what resources will they have to accomplish their mission?
Hundred thousand dollars if we wanna give it to them. You can't keep saying that the DDA is gonna take ten years. We can give the DDA whatever amount of money we want to. That's just an easy cop-out, because the DDA's already been destroyed. So that's a cop-out. The thing about it is, is Bridgman has got the nuclear plant. They got the lake. We don't have that, and we gotta stop pretending like we do. Hundred thousand dollars, you, did you, where's the hundred thousand dollars coming from, Tim? I'll just ask you.
I think they're assuming it's coming from the general fund.
So it's gonna have to come out of the general fund?
Not necessarily.
We just asked the city manager. And you told me we had the money.
I'm telling you, we have.
I don't wanna get into this.
It's fine, but we can.
I don't wanna get into this.
No, but we can get into it, but we can do it.
A portion of that salary I would expect to come from the general, as it is already, sixty-nine thousand's coming out of the general fund right now, that doesn't need to. And then we've got a large stack of those DDA reserves that are accomplishing those same missions. And we all, well, you, I wasn't on here when they dissolved the DDA, so, but the agreement was.
You were on the chamber, so you knew all about it, so that, you know, you can't go there either.
I wasn't voting anyways. Those funds are being spent out of the general fund right now, and they're typically funds that would've been spent out of a DDA. But now they're impacting the general fund's ability to do other activities in the city, whether that's road work, whatever. I mean, it's, that piece of it's a small amount.
It's still a whole mentality. I'm sorry, it's still a whole mentality. It's all township residents running, no, the DDA did not include anybody from the downtown. They didn't include anybody that they wanted to. They wrote their own bylaws. They did not answer to the city hall. So I mean, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of trash here, I'm sorry. And, you know, they didn't want any guidance. Why didn't they do this three years ago? When we were paying somebody fifty thousand dollars a year.
But don't you think that your influence has put us to this point? So I mean, let's give you a carrot, alright, and say, look, you've caught it, and said, hey, this is exactly what.
I don't wanna say I told you so.
No, I don't want you to either. What I'm saying is, is that the bottom line is, that the pressure you put on them to come to the table was something that was agreeable under the guidance of lawyers to ensure that we are substantially invested into this situation in a legal manner.
No, that just, that's my core. The taxpayers had to have some answers for the garbage they were doing.
I don't disagree.
And I call it garbage 'cause that's what it was, and it's nothing against you people that volunteer, nothing at all. Nothing at all.
I'm feeling, I'm feeling a little left out here. Just to, just to chime in on a couple of the things that we've heard, to the a hundred thousand dollars, yes, five-year commitment, but there's an annual severability clause due to lack of performance or impropriety or any of those things. So the commission retains that ability, and there could be even a clawback, right, for unspent funds.
So what's wrong with waiting until March?
So if the DDA is one of the priorities, may I, if I can ask the question, is there somebody currently, one individual, in charge of reconstituting that DDA? Who is leading that in charge? Does Rich have the capacity to do that?
Well, he said he had.
He has to, essentially, he has to have the capacity, be it himself or other parties involved to get that to happen. We are much closer to basically breathing life into Liv with a director who can then help lead the charge on the DDA. It is a faster path to having both than waiting, trying to establish the DDA with limited capacity, and then coming back to Liv. The other thing is, to Commissioner Swem's point, having to hire somebody for the DDA as opposed to having all volunteer, it's not gonna happen with all volunteer efforts, but the DDA can contract with Liv so that that, we're only spending those dollars once. This is the most efficient use of taxpayer resources that has been discussed to date. There is the most control, and the comment about, you know, the city oversight, appointment ability, the bylaws are gonna be rewritten. I've been meeting with the Liv Executive Committee about rewriting those bylaws. In Bridgman, the city and the township, which are both major investors of that organization, they both have the ability to appoint individuals to that board. There's no reason that that scenario can't happen here. So not only do you have regular reports on a monthly basis, you would have direct involvement in the decision-making of that organization because there would be multiple seats at the table. That was not part of the arrangement last time. That would be part of the arrangement this time. We have tried to bake in fail safes at every turn, every opportunity, and I've done it, coming in admittedly late, 'cause I wasn't here for the DDA. I wasn't here for the last iteration of Liv. I wasn't here for any of this. But I've tried to listen to all of the feedback and incorporate all of the feedback with enough transparency and accountability baked into this as we can find.
I still wanna ask you, what does it hurt to wait till March? Because this was really, I mean, this was kinda sly, the whole Friday afternoon meetings, you know, and then the hundred thousand dollars. Didn't really have time to digest a hundred thousand dollars. So I would like the time to wait till after we get a new city manager in place so that he can hash this out and have a chance to look at the budget, you know, rather than spending a hundred thousand dollars. Because I don't, there's things that we need to do. And I don't think, from what I've seen, spending a hundred thousand dollars on this is not, from past experience, is not gonna be very helpful. Because, you know, as bad as they wanna bash the DDA, the DDA did do a fair amount. And they would've done more if they hadn't been sat on with a big rock on their head all the time. So, I mean, I hate being the front man on the DDA here, but.
I don't, I don't think there's any issue. I think we're all agreeing with you on that. We're all in agreement on the DDA. Hundred percent. Not waiting means this is the fastest path to reconstitute that DDA.
There's been conversation where maybe possib, you know, you, you learn as an OBSer, you learn, you learn to read between the lines, and you learn to pay attention to the real single-syllable words. You don't listen to the big words, you listen to the real tiny words. And there's not been any action from Rich on the DDA at all, and we can, we can confirm that.
That's, and that's fine. We can beat that up all night. We can deal with the city manager, and if that's been stalled, then we'll deal with that at another time. I don't think that's been brought into question, whether or not we're moving forward on that.
We're still looking at attorney approval and those kind of things anyway.
Yeah, we, I mean, we're just asking tonight to get a contract started. We still have to review all of that. We understand the expectation.
And I think that, I think that's where we're going.
So, at this time, we do have one motion on the floor. So, can I get a roll call on that, and then if there's additional motions after that, we'll.
So the Liv group, Randy still has a comment he'd like to make, and he's part of the Liv Buchanan group.
So Dan, I just wanted to answer your question. I don't know if you know this, but I sat on the DDA for almost ten years, right? There's other folks on our board that sat on the DDA.
I know, I was on the DDA.
So, what your, your question is, is why wait? Why can't we wait, right? The answer to that question from my vantage point is, is that you have a very engaged group of people here that have been waiting and waiting and waiting. And you're putting that group at risk and your Main Street designation by waiting. I don't know how much longer we can hang on. We're running without an executive director. We are each advocating, working sweat equity fifteen, twenty hours a week as a volunteer. That can't sustain for another six months. So, just like we looked at the DDA and when you dissolved the DDA, we're looking back and we're going, we wish we wouldn't have done that. I think that's what this moment is. So, just understood by us and you guys, if we do put a hold on this, there's a chance this could all fall apart. So there is a sense of urgency from that vantage point.
Thank you, Randy. And in the service agreement, one of the terms can explicitly be that this individual, this director that's hired, helps shepherd through a DDA. That can be one of the explicit deliverables baked into that agreement. Very good. Okay. Roll call on the motion on the floor, please.
I wanna say something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
First of all, I wanna just say thank you to all the volunteers because I have been to a Liv Buchanan meeting, and I see how much work you guys put into it, and I appreciate that. You know, there's a lot of conversation about like the city residents not really stepping up, 'cause I know, I saw you say, "I'm city now." But everybody else, I believe, is township. Nope, okay. So there's a few of theirs, so. Okay. So, I, my only thing, I see that there is good, there's, I'm kinda split because the bylaws are such a, and I know that you're working on those, 'cause I know that we had that in the meeting, but I understand what Randy's saying about this group could potentially fall apart because they've given so much and there's no return on it. But I would, I don't think to push it back till, what'd you say, March or April? But I wanna, I would like to personally see something with the bylaws because the one-third attendance is just crazy to me.
Yeah, no, the. Just so everybody knows, the due diligence that has gone into a meeting like today, I have, and this is gonna be performative, I apologize, but you've seen this. This is the current bylaws for the organization. I've gone through with a fine tooth, run into comb, and marked up a lot of the things that are gonna be changed. I've already had a conversation with the folks on the executive committee about implementing some of these changes. We have, obviously, example or bylaw precedent from our Bridgman arrangement, which has many provisions, and stronger quorum requirements baked into it already, so it's not all new language. I've already highlighted some of the stuff that needs to be tweaked. This was, I believe, just a template that came from another community. I don't think it fit necessarily this community, but it was sort of used 'cause it was there. We have a much better template that we can work from and infuse some of these things that we're talking, talking to. I can send you those bylaws for that other, for the Bridgman organization tonight, if you want to read those. They'll be much closer to those than this.
The other thing that's worth mentioning, and before you kind of brought this up, 'cause you attended the meeting, we've had a hundred percent attendance for twelve months. Other than excuse that, Tracy was on vacation for a few of them, but she deserves that. So we've had a hundred percent attendance at our board for twelve months, and I commended the group on that at our very last meeting. So, your quorum is a very big consideration, but you've got an engaged group that you're putting at risk. That's just the message I'd like to say again.
Yeah, with that being said, I don't, I personally don't feel comfortable committing to the hundred thousand dollars for the next five years with the bylaws the way they are. I would like to see like, this is, this is what we're doing, you know, and I know that you're working on that. I seen, I read some of those. And I think, I really think you're, you're really good for the job, but I.
Thank you. Part of, part of what Order of Operations, some of what's driven in the bylaw changes are gonna probably come out of the service agreement with the city. So we haven't wanted to get too far into the bylaw conversation so that we can codify some of the things that come out of those terms in the service agreement. Once we have some of those items solidified, it'll be much easier for me to draft those into the bylaws and then get the bylaws approved by the group. So I think Order of Operations, it's all gonna happen. For us, it seems to make some sense to try to do them more concurrently instead of one preceding the other, 'cause then we'll just have to go back and change that again.
So, I mean, I think for the sake of time, just so we're all clear, that we don't have to approve a hundred thousand dollars tonight. We're only looking to begin going down the pathway of, does an agreement make sense? Can we check the boxes legally that we're supposed to check with the use of taxpayer funds? Does it pass the smell test from the financing standpoint of how we pay for it, so we can clearly answer that better? Does it pass the standard of what Dan's expecting on relationship deliverables with the DDA, reporting, et cetera? All, all good points. Before we can go down any more of a rabbit, I said I wasn't gonna use the word rabbit hole tonight. Before we can do anything like that, we all need to get on the same page on what is the baseline of an agreement going to look like before we can say what those answers are. So I know Dan has a motion on the floor for the public's sake, the media's sake. We're not agreeing to spend a hundred thousand dollars tonight. We're looking to put an agreement together that meets those deliverables, that if we were to invest that money, what would it look like?
And I think, and I think that contract has to be drawn up, and I'm quite sure that you can do that. Like you said, you could, you could probably get that done in the next week, two weeks.
Very, very quickly.
Excuse me. So, you know, for the sake of time and everything else, I think that's kinda like what we need to look at. We got our attorneys, you know, we're looking at a new city manager, and we've got these folks out here that are willing to step up to the plate and start the job right now, and I think that's something that we gotta look at real seriously because I know that, you know, Arthur, it's a good presentation, and it's something that's gonna benefit quite possibly the city, so.
I think my motion answers that. I really do. I could amend my motion to make it the first meeting in March, but that pretty much answers everything that everybody's asking for. And we've got, the initial presentation is what we were supposed to get tonight. We weren't supposed to make a motion tonight on anything. So, we can, since, I mean, I smelled it. That's why I made the motion I did. So, this gives, December's a dead month. Nobody does nothing over December. The first meeting in January. So the first meeting in March, we can rehash this, and we, and then, you know, we can get all of our ducks in a row, and then we can say, because nobody's answered my question yet. You know, Main Street's not gonna go away. Where we're at is where we're gonna stay at. The gal in Lansing wants this feather. I mean, that's the one thing I got from her from meeting her. She's been running this operation for twenty years. She wants another Main Street. We don't have the money. I'm sorry. We don't have the money. But, this motion, I will amend my motion to be for the first meeting in March so that we can address this again and then move forward with it, if that's more explicit and makes everybody a little more happy. Will you second me? Will you second me?
No, I, cause I think that's way, I think that's too far out.
Too far out.
My opinion. I, I think that's too far out.
And then we, in reality, we're back in the same boat again. We won't have a, a contract type to review to even give feedback on or reconsider.
Why wouldn't you?
If, if you're willing to, I mean, if you wanna wait to make the decision on the spend, I don't like that in March. I don't like putting a timeline on that. I, I think the proper motion and would be to pursue the legal review components of this. We already know what the ask is.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we know monetarily what it, what the ask.
You know, but we're not necessarily agreeing to that.
I think the car's in front of the horse and I don't like the way it was done. I don't like the way it was done at all. I don't like the way it was done. You know, you didn't give us a heads up on this at all. This could've been a really good presentation without asking for anything. But then you, you snuck in the hundred thousand dollars. You snuck in the lawyer fees. You know, you could've presented us with a contract, you could've presented us with bylaws. You know, you come in here saying that the volunteers are gonna run away. No, they're not, because they've been around for forty years. They're gonna be the same people doing the same thing. And I thank all of you for what I'm saying. And listen to what I'm saying, not what you think. Because I really don't care what you think. Because the taxpayers are spending this hundred thousand dollars and the taxpayers live in the city of Buchanan, period.
It would, it would've been disingenuous of me to get up here and not state the number that the, the group is contemplating and that I've openly discussed.
No, I understand.
So, there's no, it's the opposite of sneaky. It's as transparent as I could possibly be about.
It's the way it was presented.
Alright, we're good. Dan, you good?
Well, then I guess my motion's stand.
Well, we still have to do roll call, please.
Will you reread the motion?
All of it?
Well, the, I didn't amend it, so I mean, the amendment wasn't...
Well, the first motion was that you're postponing, uh, everything, I'm guessing? Contract, presentation, budget, bylaws until April.
Yeah, that's what I was...
That's sound about right.
So, yeah, we had to vote on that motion.
And you supported it.
Right, so we just need a roll call and then we'll move forward.
Gotcha. Whedon?
No.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
No.
Swem?
No.
George?
No.
Motion doesn't carry.
Thank you.
I'll motion to proceed with legal review.
For contract, sorry.
Yep, yep.
For con- for services.
Not agree, yeah, we're not agreeing to any funding at this time. Just agreeing to a contract legal review so we can work on the path forward.
Do we have support?
Just Money, I'll support that.
Discussion?
When would this meeting be? Like, or when would this go on though?
So, they're gonna take this, uh, after we vote, they'll take this back and then they'll have their draft. And then their draft will be reviewed by our legal team and then that will be presented to us.
I think there are plenty of questions that I gotta answer tonight, too, that when we look at that contract can get answered specifically. Dan and I's disagreement on how the funding mechanism works, great topic for us to, when we talk about this again, to review.
And the, here's the, here's the most important thing, and this is part of the, when I've said this from the very beginning, Dan's disagreement and Dan's opinion, he's absolutely one hundred percent entitled to everything he's saying. He did it with decorum, he did it with passion, and he's absolutely allowed to do so. Our responsibility is to take that patience and listen to what he has to say, even in the, even if you disagree. I disagree with him. You can disagree and be kind about it. So, I want people to know that everything he's saying isn't the voice for the entire commission. That's why there's five of us and this is why we vote. So, please know that I thank him for what he said because sometimes his passion forces people to work harder. And that's okay. So, uh, roll call, please.
Bianski?
No.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Appreciate you guys tonight.
Thank you very much.
A lot of work, thanks to this.
Arthur, can you send me a copy of your presentation, please?
And then, do you need me, do you need me to postpone? Do you need me to get a motion for the one?
Uh, yeah, can I get a motion to postpone?
I'll move to postpone one Buchanan presentation.
Till the summer night?
Till when?
December night.
December night.
Thank you.
Do we have support?
No, Money, I'll support.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
And Bianski?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Uh, now on to new business, city manager position. The city commission may deliberate and consider selecting a lead candidate and extended job offer conditioned on the successful completion of a background check and pre-employment verification process, further subject to negotiating an employment agreement that is brought back to the city commission for approval at future meeting. At this time, I will take a motion, um, to extend a conditional offer to an individual who interviewed with us in the last three days.
I move to extend a conditional offer of employment to Tony McGee to serve as Buchanan city manager contingent on successful contract negotiations and background check.
Do we have support?
I'll support.
Discussion?
Yeah, I wanna, um, the city actually got fifty applications for this position. And we got to choose from ten, we narrowed it down to five. We interviewed four and any one of them would've made a really good city manager for any number of different reasons. So, it wasn't, um, it wasn't extremely difficult. We picked the one pretty much unanimously with the best fit for what we're doing right now. We're at a, we are at a precipice or a cusp and I really personally feel that. Um, the city Buchanan's got a shot. That's why I fight so hard, um, because I don't wanna screw it up, because we're not gonna get a second chance on this one. Um, like we do on everything else. You know, so, I just wish Tony the best luck and hope he accepts our offer.
Yeah, I, I'll add to, I wanna thank, sorry, you wanna go first, Larry?
No, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanna thank all the applicants that put the time and effort in. Um, we made a much more thorough review this time around, uh, compared to our last search. Brought them back again today at five o'clock to, with a challenging presentation. They had a very short window of time to prepare to see how they thought on their feet and how quickly they could put something together for us. And they all did a, a very excellent job on that. I'm assuming we'll all vote the same on this one, just based on how they all went, um. So, but that being said, thank you, thank you to all of you that put the time and effort in. Uh, I think Tony is going to be an excellent choice and we, we hope we can find a, a mutual ground on a contract with you, Tony.
Just kinda wanna reiterate what Patrick said. Uh, I know Catherine's still in the audience and you did a great job, a fabulous job. And, uh, we really appreciate it and we really took it to heart. You have just a couple of things, you know, that we looked at. And, uh, um, like I said, we started out with fifty, broke it down to ten, went to five. Four of you showed up, did great jobs. And, uh, I just really wanna thank you for the time and effort that you've put in, uh, to wanting to secure this position. Thank you.
Go to the jungle.
I wanna say thank you to everyone that showed up to be interviewed and, um, yes, Catherine, you did a great job. I enjoyed your presentation and I think that you have a lot of, um, things to look forward to. Um, but I wanna congratulate, hopefully, um, Tony. Um, I think that you'll be an excellent addition, so. I appreciate everyone that showed up and even, um, Scott.
So, for, for the community's information that, you know, what we've received from Tim's due diligence to, to not only bring our staff together, uh, in times of turmoil and, and unfortunately during the interviews, some of the, the topics that were, uh, we experienced over the last year or so were brought up and, and, you know, what we're looking for out of our new city manager and as much as Tim has proven that, uh, it's not indicative of who we are. Uh, we have the group from Live Buchanan as the volunteers, it's just a small glimpse into what we are as Buchanan. And I'm extremely excited, Catherine, because you're here, thank you so much for interviewing Tony. Uh, thank you as well, Scott, who may or may not watch this. Thank you for taking the drive to come down and, and for the fifty applicants, because that's an amazing feat for a city our size to have that many applicants. And for them to have a chance, uh, as a staff to meet with individuals who we had chosen in the final three, I think is instrumental because that's one of the, my core beliefs is that you, you support it through your team. Uh, and, and the leadership has been proven that through Tim, uh, he can bring the team together and do a really great job for this city. So, I'm really looking forward to it, Tony. I really hope that we, uh, can get through negotiations and put you in that seat. And, uh, I, I thank the commission for, for making the right decision. I believe we did and I'm super excited for where the city Buchanan's going and, uh, hopefully we can entice Tim to stick around cause I think we have more to get out of him before he officially, officially, officially retires.
We're gonna squeeze him.
Yeah, so we already got that commitment in the corner, so.
I'm not taking December off, Dan.
Just, just off, just off from Dan, that's all, alright? Okay, so, uh, we have a motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Got a motion, I support.
Swem?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations. Wonderful, thank you, everybody. Uh, next under new business, two thousand twenty-five meeting notice schedule. Consider changing the time of the city commission regular meetings from seven to six.
I'll just ask.
Okay.
Why is this on the agenda?
I don't know.
You approve it.
I know. I think it was more for the purpose of the individuals within our preview. So, I think it just, it, it begs the question of why, uh, they would wanna change it? I don't, was there justification for the change?
I just do the agenda.
I'll move to...
Just fill in the blanks, right?
I'll move to approve keeping the regular city commission meetings at the current time of seven P M.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
George?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Yes.
Dan, the answer I can give you is probably covered in the amount of importance on the other topics that I just probably, like skimmed right over that one, so, hey, you know what, we're all human, right?
Alright, alright.
Expenditures. Consider approving expenditures for November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four in the amount of fifty-four thousand, two forty-eight and fifty-seven cents.
I gotten, I've gotten in the habit of going over them with Tim. I didn't this week. Um, things have been weird the last couple of weeks and with everything else that's going on. Didn't really see anything. There's a couple of things I normally raise with him, but there was nothing, with it only being fifty-four thousand. There was nothing on there specifically.
Okay.
So, are you making a motion?
I will move to approve expenditures in the amount of fifty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Do we have support?
Money will support.
I think George beat him.
George beat you.
Sorry.
Youth.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Roll call, please.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda, December twenty-third meeting cancellation. Consider the canceling the regular city commission meeting scheduled for December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll move to approve cancellation of the twen- December twenty-third regular meeting and give administrative approval to the city manager Lynch to approve the, uh, expenditures for December twen- through December twenty-third meeting. Please do send those out to the commission, um, in case we have questions.
Alright, do we have support?
Go ahead, Raquel.
Okay.
George supports.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, we do not have any communications. At this time, we will take public comment for non-agenda items. Please, uh, keep your comments to three minutes and approach the podium and state your name for the record.
Norma Ferris, three zero four North Oak. I am asking for communication. Okay, our leaves are in mess. Residents no longer rate the tree lawn, they are in the street along with summer grass, dandelion, all of this other stuff. Our storm drains are clogged. We cannot operate with the personnel we have now. If we don't get some communication that clean up our act, you have to hire some more employees. You can't do it. And also with the code inspector, we only have one as long as I've been here. He's maxed out, our police, they have phone plates. We have to hire another person to help. Plus, you've got to have someone that is going to teach the one we have now. We don't have enough employees to keep carrying on. And I'm asking for you to reprimand us. Then, with the streets, uh, with the sidewalks, the property owner is supposed to maintain them. We have new people coming in. Who is responsible for telling them that it is their responsibility to keep the sidewalk clean? If you want to have people purchasing things in Buchanan? Food, marijuana, hardware? Who's gonna do it? Is that up to the realtor or is that up to you? Now, I'm asking for you to act.
Thank you, Norma.
Thank you, Norma.
Alright, uh, seeing no more public, we will take executive comments.
Okay, I'm for the Front Street retaining wall project. We are rebidding that, uh, advertising it on November thirtieth. We revised the substantial completion date of June thirtieth. Bids are due January ninth and we will consider it at the following meeting. The auditors, Crewland Lawton, plan to be at our next meeting, uh, December ninth to present the audit. And Chief Burnett and his group will be conducting cop, shop with the cop December seventh with all donated funds. That's all I have.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Bianski?
I wanted to thank the, uh, code enforcement officer for handing out tickets, but I do have a problem with the fact that a city commissioner had to tell a city manager to tell the code enforcement officer. And as far as Norma's, I don't know if we need to post more on Facebook, but I was, I do wanna address the snow. Everybody shovels their driveways and then the snowplow comes along and plows the ends shut. I think the city should find an obligation to clean out the ends of the sidewalks after they plow them shut. Especially the main thoroughfares going to the school. I mean, because I watched the kids on Detroit walk over that mountain or they walked down the street. And Bill is eighty-nine years old and he's out there blowing his sidewalks off and his sidewalks look great except for the mountain right there at the end at Front Street. So, um, and I would ask that when we do get a lot of snow and we do the sidewalks, we do all the sidewalks this year, not pick and choose which ones we do. And we make sure that we turn around and we do the road out past Cameron's this year, as long as we're there. And as far as leaf, I don't know, I haven't looked at it yet, but I'm gonna look at why we don't have a leaf vacuum and how expensive it is. You know, and the manpower, uh, I don't know if it takes more manpower, but I haven't seen the baler, so, um, I thought that was gonna work out, but it didn't. And, you know, we got another shot at it, cause we get leaves every year. And Snowball, Patrick, is my name now.
Did I say Snowball?
You're good. Ms. George?
Yes, um, first of all, I wanna say congratulations to Tony again. I, I'm excited to work with you and, um, see what we can accomplish. I also am looking forward to the Live Buchanan, um, contract, I guess. I wanna, I can't wait to see that and hopefully we can move forward with that, um, depending on how that goes. And I would like to see the same thing as Dan, um, the leaf vacuum. I would be interested to see if that's more manpower or what that all entails. And, uh, also looking forward to the bids. And just wanna wish everybody a happy, safe Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Mr. Money?
Well, congratulations, Tony. Uh, like I said, it's gonna be a pleasure working with you, I hope. And, uh, kind of excited to get things rolling and, uh, uh, see where we can leave the city. I wanna thank Art and the Live Buchanan program, you did a great job. I think it's something that, uh... I wanna thank Art and the Live Buchanan program. You did a great job. Uh, I think it's something that, uh, we're gonna look forward to. Uh, and like I said, you've got a great, great group of volunteers and it'll be pretty exciting to, uh, see where we can go with this. November thirtieth is coming and the, uh, Christmas tree lighting and everything that's gonna be going on in Buchanan. It's gonna be kind of a fun type thing and, uh, there's a lot of people that are involved with it, so hope to see everybody down there. Other than, uh, it's great working once again with this commission. Uh, appreciate all the staff and the, uh, work that Mr. Lynch has done here. Hopefully continuing on for a little longer so we can get stuff going. Uh, everybody have a great Thanksgiving and thank you for being here.
Thanks. Mr. Swem?
Tony, I'm looking forward to chatting with you after the meeting. Uh, a little less formal than we've been up to this point, but congratulations once again. Huge thank you to the team at Live and the Southwest Regional Chamber. Uh, I encourage my peers, you've been given a lot of information tonight. You were asked a lot tonight, so consider, go through this information. Please send them questions, uh, all of us. If there's something that you wanna address or you wanna see in a contract, um, it's best to get that to them as soon as we can so we can get better answers. Um, more thoughtful answers. I think they've done a lot here. They, they answer a lot of that already. It's here for us. Um, but please, it's a big investment, um, and I highly believe that they will deliver. That's my take on that. I know what this group brings and I, I've seen what Arthur's group has done, so that's my take on that. But I will also be going through this information and compiling questions for them, um, so we can put a Buchanan in the best position and, and them in the best position to succeed. Uh, you received something that, uh, you got, or you got something in your packet this week that you haven't seen in a long time, but you saw a little bit of at, uh, our strategic planning. The finance team has got the books looking great. Um, budget to actual reporting is on, on target again. Bank reconciliations are zero. That is an expectation, if you recall from our last audit, um, was something that they said we needed to be better on top of. And they delivered on it and it's looking fantastic. If anybody wants to bounce some of that off of me, I'm happy to talk through it with you. Um, but the most important thing is that balance to zero that Courtney highlights for us stays zero. So that's a great job on that team, so thank you for that work. I wrote a note here, but I don't know what I meant by that comment, so. Uh, happy Turkey Day to everybody. Buchanan for the holidays, the big tree lighting event is November thirtieth downtown at the Common. Mark, what time are you giving remarks at? Five thirty?
The parade starts at five thirty, so probably look for an introduction around six o'clock. I'm taking a wild guess.
Okay. And then, yeah, good points on the sidewalk. I know I'm spoiled. I, I think, uh, the school routes are the, the ones that DPW crew primarily focuses on for snow removal so the little ones can get to and from school. Um, I know those are done consistently for, at least in my neighborhood. I, I happen to live across the street from the elementary school, so, um, but yes, it is the homeowner's responsibility to do their sidewalk. So as the public works crew has the capacity, I appreciate the work that goes into that. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, first and foremost, Mike, thank you for all the hard work from your team. And I know they're the easiest target, uh, by, by a long shot. They're the easiest target for not getting things done. Uh, you guys never work fast enough. That's, that's just, it's just the way it goes. I know you deal with it really well. You've been out there many times getting the leaves up. I mean, how many, how many rounds have you done now? It's, it's at least five, six at a minimum. Two really, really hard passes with a lot of leaves. And we got very fortunate with the weather change back, so now, uh, I'm sure your team will be out again, once again, to, to keep the city strong. So I know they do have the big back truck out. I've seen them using that, so I, I do know that that is functional as well. Uh, the baler is not running because, uh, the tractor thing and we were, that's, we still gotta work through that, so that- The baler's broke down. Is that, okay, well, that's another answer. We did use the baler. It did put some hours in. It has been broke down. I have parts. I don't have the time to fix it. Gotcha. Uh, they are currently moving into their new DPW building. Uh, if you hadn't had a chance to take, uh, run over there and stop and see it, it's absolutely beautiful. Uh, so, thank you for all the teams that put in the effort to make that happen. Uh, Tony, thank you very much once again. Uh, looking forward to it. Uh, I, I'm pretty certain we'll come to an agreement and, uh, yeah, I think everybody has said what they need to say. Live Buchanan, great presentation. I'm super excited. I know the volunteers have really put in, I don't even, I don't even, can't even imagine how many hours to continue this going and they haven't given up. So, um, with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Support?
Money, I'll support.
Roll call, please.
Money?
Oh, did you?
Swem?
Good, yes.
George?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yep.
Thank you.
I didn't, sorry, Raquel. I didn't know you were gonna say that.
She knew, no, no, she knew. She was just-
I was like, really?
No.